Everybody, you ready to get started? I'll call the morning, the annual meeting of the Manitou Springs Urban Renewal Authority Board to order at nine thirty. Happy New Year, everyone. Glad you could all make it in the snow. And Alan Gregory, can you hear us okay?
I can.
Good. All members are present. Our first item of business in our annual meeting is the election of officers for 2025. A slate has been presented. I need a, need a motion.
I move we accept the slate.
Yeah.
I have to put my glasses on. Do you want us to read it, John?
Yes, please. I can do that. Chair, the Farley, Vice Chair, myself, Secretary Anne and Treasury Treasurer Barb.
Other way.
Excuse me, Secretary Barb, Treasurer Anne.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's moved and seconded that we accept the slate of officers for 2025. All in favor, please by signify by raising your hand.
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, we have a new somewhat new officers for this year. And with that, Farley, I guess I can turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you. All right, everybody. It's a new year. First up, or second up, I should say, is the approval of the suggested monthly meeting dates. I did have a change that I noticed. The first date is for January seventeenth. I believe that's an error.
Yeah, I caught that. I've corrected it.
Okay. So if we could note that change, we will not be meeting on the seventeenth. And it suggested we continue to meet on the first Tuesday at nine thirty AM at the Manitou Springs City Hall. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. And next, we have our city council liaison 2025 appointment Nancy. I have a few things to say. Are you accepting? I've been out of the loop.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
There's five minutes on here, so.
Yeah, no. The, we're, we'll be voting on it tonight, who all the board liaisons on and the recommendation is to pretty much leave everybody as they were. So unless you guys have any concerns about me remaining. On the good news side is that I will be, I recommended that I no longer be mayor per tem, which means that I can now attend your meetings fully on two same mornings. So, because I won't have my other meeting to go to. So anyway, and just to follow up on that Natalie, recommendation is that Natalie be the mayor per tem and that I be the backup mayor per tem. So Natalie and I would just switch. So that's all. Thanks.
Fantastic. So do we need a motion until, we don't need a motion for that, right? Right, just, okay.
I have one question, though.
Please.
Does this mean that you could be a member of the board, a sitting member could not? Okay.
No, because it's just a liaison position that council appoints me to. So I don't, I don't know the laws. I can't imagine that I would be okay to be on that.
We have frequently had a council member. I mean, Mark was a board member for years.
Yeah, I thought that we could have one council person as a board member.
Yeah, I don't know that there's any limit, but we can certainly have a council member as a board member. And that maybe is a discussion.
Yeah, yeah.
That could occur.
Yeah, and we just need to confirm it, but I didn't know Mark had actually been a member when he was.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, interesting.
Wasn't Corina a member as well?
She was. I think you're right. Yeah.
So could I ask Nancy, would you be interested in being a regular member?
Sure, I think it would. Yeah, I would like you guys to discuss it at length to, not at length, but to discuss it. But let's check into it and see, but I would be willing to do that.
Okay, I think we should check with David Neville to make sure that legally we can.
John, it's, John, it's, it's fine. It really is. Colorado Springs has had that for years.
Yeah, in the, this, the, the city, the state statute's pretty clear.
Okay.
That it can be a council member.
You might want to clarify that although she's still the liaison, she's an act full member. But I think you probably have to have that confirmed by council.
Yeah, and I'll check with Jeff Parker as well, so.
Yeah, the mayor, the mayor actually needs to probably appoint Nancy as a full member.
Okay. All right, very good. And when the heat kicks on, can I ask everybody to speak a little closer to the microphone, please? I could, I could barely hear what you were saying. Okay, then, very good. Moving on to board vacancies. Who is, who's vacating?
Obviously, if we, if we got the mayor to appoint Nancy, that would take care of getting us to an odd number, which is where we should be.
Okay.
And again, the state statute that we're operating under is five to eleven. So there's limit, almost limitless possibilities if we wanted, or the mayor wanted to add people. But we certainly should add one.
Okay.
Have the mayor add one.
So we want to wait and just see what happens this evening, perhaps? Or you're gonna have to just, what, how do we want to?
I'll talk offline with Jeff and John.
And maybe email?
Yeah.
Or?
Great. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
You, Farley.
All right, very good. All right, is there anything else needed to be discussed for the annual meeting?
No.
But he's satisfied? Very good. All right, then I'll take a motion to close the annual meeting. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. And we will now open the regular meeting for business. Okay, at what time?
Nine thirty-eight.
All right, and all members are still in, still present, present, and we do have Collette Johnson here as guest. And is there a public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to approval of December meeting minutes.
Move approval.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion, changes, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Abstain. John Maynard abstains. Okay, and that satisfies the approval of the meeting minutes. Moving on to financial reports, Anne?
Right, so we finally did get September, October, and November. I'll just look at November. There's not a ton of activity in any of the months, but November showing a total checking account cash of eight hundred and ten thousand. Cash with the treasurer of over, a little over fifteen thousand. And then pretty much just, although on the second page, I'll call attention to, or the third page maybe, to the fact that we will probably end up with property taxes of about a hundred and eighty-five thousand. We never could get the treasurer to get us a good number for what they expected. And they ended up not withholding their collection fees for like three or four months and made that up, I think in November, but maybe it was December. So it'll be around that hundred and eighty-five thousand. And as I recall, I budgeted around that less, the reduction in, in AV for the estimated twenty twenty-five property taxes. Other than that, again, it's fairly routine. We did make the payment, the grant payment to Scott. What's Scott's name?
Yeah.
Yeah, for seventy-five hundred. They got the work done.
It looks very nice.
The building, yeah, it looks great. When I went down to bring him the check, he actually walked me through the building and they've done a really nice job.
Oh, God.
So, and he did indicate they, that they've got problems with the roof, and it's a very big roof. And they might be back asking for additional funds for the facade improvement. So other than that, I'd be happy to answer questions if there are any.
Only, I did, I do recall, so this morning, there was a question about DCI.
Right.
And that's not separately budgeted, is that just in?
It's probably under, who knows? Probably other, under other expenses, my guess is.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, good. Yep, very good.
So, so Anne, on the November data, we're showing an annual budget of two oh two, seven twenty-six?
That's what we adopted for twenty twenty-four.
Would we? Oh, that's twenty?
Twenty-four.
Okay.
Right. And again, as I indicated, we could, generally in February, you get a treasurer's letter that tells you what they expect to collect. They could never, because they shifted software and who knows, they could never get us a number. So we were assuming it probably wasn't going to be two oh two, but we had no idea. Because as you recall, last year, at the end of last year, there were all those huge changes in property tax law that the state enacted. So it was, we knew it wasn't going to be two oh two, but we never knew what it was going to be.
So we could have some residual come in?
Probably not.
You don't believe so?
I don't believe so. Again, they could never get us a good number. We know two oh two was not a good number.
Okay.
And there should be, although there was, and I can't remember, maybe it was December. Probably not. It's probably November. There was a pretty good amount of property taxes paid. And the, the fines or whatever that they assess for late payments. So who knows what's gonna, what we'll see in December, and we won't see that till a couple of days from now, January tenth.
Okay.
Thank you. Regarding the Wellness Center, or whatever it's called.
Right, right.
Given that they are not paying any taxes, or it's my understanding that paying property taxes or sales taxes or any kind of taxes, what's the philosophy of this board regarding that if, regarding the grants? If they, if they're not providing any income to the city or the URA?
Right.
Does it? So, you know, and they're like one of the only ones, I think, that pay absolutely nothing. So I was just.
That's because they're owned by nonprofits.
Right, I know, I know. I'm just talking philosophy.
We've never tied, in my recollection, we never tied the facade improvement grant to anything to do with taxes. It was simply a grant, small grant now up to twenty-five thousand to help improve the, the buildings. It was, it's the redevelopment agreements that are tied to the taxes. So I don't believe we ever tied those two.
That, that's correct, Anne. Yeah, there's nothing in the language of the agreement that says that they have to be a property tax or sales tax paying member.
Good, thanks, Jim. Yeah.
Any further discussion of that particular item? Or that topic? Okay. Yeah, I was gonna say, can we get a motion to accept the financials, the November financials twenty twenty-four?
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Anne. Okay, and on to old business, John Maynard?
I'm not sure I have the most up-to-date information, other than the Planning Commission action to review a variance for density was denied on a four to three vote at last month's Planning Commission meeting. It's my understanding that Paragon will not appeal that or go forward with the project as currently proposed. But I'm not sure where else it stands, and maybe that'll be in in Jim's executive director report.
Any questions? For John? All right, we'll move on to thirty-two. That's okay.
Just on that, they, they did come to council. They did send counsel an email asking if they could come and speak at a meeting during the first, during public comment regarding the well, variants, but the, our resul, or our ordinance, our city code in general. And the mayor did respond that it was probably not. So I don't know where that's going to end up, Alan.
Yeah, I, they also sent a letter to the, an email to the Planning Commission suggesting they want to look at density and land use. And I think the mayor went back and forth with city administrator and city attorney and has, has decided that they won't be speaking for three minutes tonight to make a presentation during the non-agenda item public comment and will and, and not, you know, there won't be any interaction, but they will make their pitch. Yes.
And do, do we know what this pitch is?
Well, I, the, the letter they, the email they shared with Planning Commission, and I think it was similar with council was they're interested in having a discussion about densities and the, the notion of increasing it. And, and, you know, their pitches to open up the discussion for densities or new zone district or something to.
To modify that in the city code.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And just to follow up as well, we're talking about the potential of having a joint meeting with Planning Commission and Council on the February twelfth, I think, to look at you know, the six-month or annual update or relook at the code. So who knows?
I'll just make a planner's comment, yes. My reading of the code is that the council, the planning commissioner staff could propose changes to the code, but not a private entity. And as such, the, the question I would have if I were Paragon is, is that, does the community want to make any changes to the code? If they do, I mean, if one of those three bodies thinks there needs to be changes, then it's incumbent on either the council, the planning commissioner staff to propose something. And I can think of two or three ways to make changes that might facilitate either their project or a similar project or a workforce housing type project in the commercial district. And one would be to, well, I'm probably going off on a tangent here, but there, there are multiple ways to do that. And it's fairly easy to outline what those ways are. It's fairly difficult to write code to accomplish it. So that being said, I don't know what direction the city is headed here.
There will be an agenda item on the Planning Commission agenda tomorrow night to discuss the land use code. I mean, discuss, you know, just to get the opinion of commissioners on whether we should, the commission should request review. And, you know, there's been sentiment that, you know, this six-month review or whatever is going to be addressed in February, we're sort of in alignment with that.
Well, that, that was interesting. Thank you, thank you for sharing. And I believe we can move on now to thirty-two Manitou Avenue, Jim?
Yeah, actually, you kind of covered it. You know, they, they finished the work on the outside, the stucco work, and Anne went down, checked it out. And the pictures I got, it looks really good. So, yeah, I fully expect that they will come back this year for additional work. Because this one was only seventy-five hundred, so I'm assuming they're going to come back again. And that was the last conversation I had with Scott DeWalt. He indicated that they would, they needed to raise some more money on their part to continue doing some more improvements.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Jim regarding thirty-two?
I just have a question for Nancy. Nancy, is, is the nature of that business going to be discussed at city council in any regard?
They actually, the night that you guys met, when we met that night and they were here, they also came to council.
Okay.
Or whenever, when we, we did approve the resolution, so they can go ahead and apply for license now. So yeah, it's, it's a done deal. As soon as they get their license, they can open for business. But they have to go through the state. The licenses are granted by the state, so.
Yeah, my sense in listening to that discussion is council was quite positive about the business. So it seemed to be a very good discussion, really.
Yeah, they, one thing that we were not aware of, which we found out that night was very interesting, is that they charge between three and four, or typically, they haven't set their prices yet, to my knowledge, but they typically charge between three and four thousand dollars per treatment. So it is not, it's going to be interesting to see how it plays out.
Thank you.
Just, I missed last meeting and when this was discussed. Any indication that they might want to add the sunflower back to the building that was removed? I mean, that was a cooperative agreement with Crane, I believe, to paint the sunflower, which I thought, found very attractive and just curious if that had been discussed.
I'm not sure that you could, well, maybe you could. I don't know, because it's that stucco. The surface might not be appropriated anymore. However, Crane is there, we are, we, we are working on a mural project for the whole town, and you all have already approved some money for one mural. And that mural location has not been fully identified. We've, we've, we've been having trouble getting a hold of the property owner for the one location in the URA that, that we're looking at. So maybe that would be interesting.
Especially since they've refinished the surface, it looks really nice. It'd be great for a mural.
And maybe Farley, maybe Farley, it could actually be a separately painted mural and hung on the building in some manner would be lovely. I've actually had neighbors say that they missed the picture, the painting.
Yeah.
So it was, it was attractive. But that might be a solution.
Yeah, we've hung, we have, the one on the back of the chamber is separate from the building, so we have ways to do it. I think we just need to identify some funding for a new mural.
What location are you considering as your sole?
The, um, let's see, it would be the north-facing side of the Park Row. As you're coming across the Marcy Morrison Bridge, if you're heading south, that, there's like a spot there. We were looking at the Holiday Inn, the backside, but for most of the year, you really can't see the back of that building from the trails. So we decided it wasn't a good location. Adams was identified a little further down the line, kind of has some of the similar issues when it's, when everything's leafed out, you can't see it at all, really. So the Park Row was a good, good idea. And then the Juan and Juan and. Who's the project manager for the Dylan? Vanessa, Vanessa? They had asked about the possibility of a mural in that location as well. But we haven't heard back from them, so it is possible that we could add that as a location now, because the building was not refinished when we were looking for spots. So, yeah. I'll I'll definitely bring it up to the crane board we meet this week. Let me write that down, I forget everything. Very good, okay, very good, any further discussion? All right, and we will move on to executive director report, Jim?
Um, let's see, what I've been working on, obviously, the trying to get everything coordinated for the interview you're going to have today. For the new executive director. Also coordinating with the with Scott DeWalt on the thirty two Manitou Avenue, and we just talked about that. And what else we got going on here? Obviously, been kind of kept abreast of the planning commission actions on one twenty three Manitou Avenue. So that's probably the majority of things that I've been involved with so far. The other thing I've been doing, just an FYI, is cleaning up all my files and getting them ready on a flash drive to pass on.
Okay. All right, are there any questions for Jim? Nancy? Okay. All right, very good, then, thank you, Jim, we'll move on to new business. And. I believe at this time, we're going to hear a little presentation possibly. Is that was that the plan, Elektra? Sure, why don't you come up and join us? Oh, yeah.
Well, if you have a question, I'll pass it back to you. All right, so, yeah, I guess I just wanted to introduce myself after speaking with Jim. I just wanted to introduce myself, I'm Elektra Johnson, I'm. Third generation Coloradan, my husband is from Colorado as well. He's up in Keystone in our family house that he grew up in right now, skiing with my son. And we took a couple days off because we've been building a house. Kind of behind Savelli's for the last four years, so I haven't been very clean the last. Four years because I've been covered in red fountain formation Manitou dirt, so I made the exception to clean up for you all today. And we've been building, I do architecture and planning and. I have had my own consulting business since. Since I moved to Colorado Springs right before in two thousand eight. And I grew up in Southern Colorado. And before I moved here, I worked doing, I worked for the EPA Smart Growth Task Force, and I worked. For a company called Van Meter Williams Pollock and like fifty other architecture firms up in Denver, not really fifty, but. Quite a large number, just doing planning, and I found that I love kind of the. Place where planning and. Interaction with community and community organizing kind of comes together for transformation of communities. And I've been. Driving up and down where the U R A is. For years dreaming about it. And all the possibilities of. Of what it could be and connections to the creek and pedestrian areas and. And what does Manitou look like in the future? That to me is my where really my heart is, the house that I'm building is not a spec house. We made nine thousand compressed earth blocks from fountain formation dirt, and we have. Put heart and soul into this house, my husband is the head of the art department at Colorado College, so we've been building it. Mostly just us. My son now knows how to use a skid steer and an excavator, and he's thirteen, he just turned thirteen. And. And we're committed to being here for many generations, my house is going to be here for a thousand years, I won't, but that's okay, I hope that. The work that I do helps benefit next generations. And I see in most of our Colorado communities a trend towards less places for families, less places for the next generation. Less places for people who work within the community, like teachers and firefighters and worker housing. And it's really important for me to to work and focus my work specifically in Colorado. To make it more places for community and for people. So that's what I've been doing right now currently with the planning work that I'm doing. I am writing the strategic master plan for Park County. Which has been wonderful in a very weird sort of way. If you know where Park County is, it's kind of the heart of Colorado. But it has no incorporated. Towns other than Bailey, well, Bailey's not incorporated, other than Fair Play and Alma, so they've got very little tax base and. A tremendous amount of maintenance and no shared water systems and. Bad planning for years because you could buy a piece of land at the county fair that somebody had prospected, so. Working through some of those planning things, I also do architecture as well, and. I've done, well, the house over there by Sun Water Spies. I worked with the the owners to do that and designed it about three times to. Get it, get it to work with that full, full grade slope, and so I've worked with the Manitou. Planning Department anyway. When Michelle Anthony was there mostly, and since then, I've I've sort of met a variety of the people who have kind of moved through. And I'm just, to me, I'm very community. Organ or oriented in everything that I do. And if I believe in something, I will move a mountain to make it happen. If I don't believe in something, it's very difficult for me to do it. So that's kind of who I am, and I'm I'm open for questions, I brought my portfolio of planning work and other work, and I have other stuff online too. That I'm happy to show you all, I'm also working in Rocky Ford right now, I decided. About four years ago that my focus was going to be specifically on Colorado. Work, because before then I'd done work kind of all across the country, and I felt like Colorado needed to be. More prepared for the future, and so that's sort of the work that I've been doing, it's entirely the work that I've been doing. And I'm open for any kind of questions that that you might have.
Thank you so much for that introduction. Open for questions?
I'll just, I'm curious, what kind of work are you doing for Rocky Ford?
Rocky Ford, so about three years ago, I got a grant to do their master plan for the Arkansas Valley Fairgrounds in Crystal Lake. And Crystal Lake was the holding ponds for the mill there. And. And they don't have any parks in that in the in in the northern part of the of the town of Rocky Ford. At all, like it was worker housing and it was identified by. The Children in Nature Program as as an area that was devoid of any kind of play space. And that's one of the the trends that I've seen in in rural Colorado is public lands are disappearing. And it looks like there's a lot of open space, but there's not. And more and more of those lands are being purchased, like in Park County, as well as in. Rocky Ford, a good majority of that land is owned by the city of Aurora or owned by the city of. Colorado Springs or the city of Denver for water rights, so very little of the water actually goes to Park County and also in the in Rocky Ford. So what I was, what I've been working on is working with a few different things, one is. They have the oldest fairgrounds in in the in the state that have been continually in use, and because I really. Like working with adobe and dirt. I've been working with the Historic Preservation Society to try to try to update, they have. Adobe stalls, and so we've been working on renovating the the fairgrounds, they've got a tremendous drainage problem. Because our storms, as you know, are getting stronger and stronger, and most infrastructure that was put in in rural areas was put in. Like during LBJ's reign, like it's been a long time since we've actually invested in rural areas. And so I've been working with Black Hills to update their fairgrounds, to have an investment to do more sustainably. And green energy type things in the fairgrounds, and then we got a nature everywhere grant. To build kind of a cohort with with the Colorado Parks and Wildlife. To the this is such a long complicated thing, so we've been building basically a youth cohort. On the eastern plains as part of a way to connect and advocate for the eastern plains, which is one piece. And then the other piece is, I think we've tripled their budget with grants and things. So I've worked with a woman who lives up in Crystal Hills named Karen Kanter, who writes grants. And she has written a number of of grants for them, GOCO grants. As well as other grants to to help with their budgeting and help sort of transform Rocky Ford into. A place for the next generation, so. No, it's Otero County, but we are working with Bent Crowley. Kaowa, Otero in in our CPW cohort, which was a directive from the governor, so. Yeah, that's very exciting. We haven't gotten, well, the Palmer Land Trust, it's funny because we've been working with them around. Fire equipment for other other communities in Werfino County, because they do some some grants for for fire equipment. And mitigation, but not not as much. Colorado Health Foundation, we got a grant for cleanup there, and then I also wrote a grant. For in in Werfino County for a community services cooperative building over the last couple of years for another project that I've been working on, that's. That one's finished, but. The community has that, and that was working with a nonprofit board. Yes, yeah, yeah, Rocky Ford is, that whole area is Black Hills, and yeah, and it's very expensive out there for energy. Yeah, but Excel would be another one to to really lean on.
Or could you, you know, this is a public meeting and there might be people watching, so it's better if you have your mic on.
Okay, no worries.
Sorry.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so do you have any other questions around any other pieces? So so that's kind of the work that I've been doing, it's kind of broad range, I have. Somebody who works with me who does more of the policy side and land use code pieces. His name's Sky Tallman, and he is, he was the. Planning Director in Los Anamis County and in Werfino County. And he's been working writing policy. But my focus is really sort of transformational design for communities through community outreach consensus building. Working with really adverse kind of groups of people and trying to bring people together. Towards a common vision, that's been something that I've really focused on and and putting myself in places where where. People may think very differently than than I do, for instance, like Park County or, you know, other things like that. So.
Go ahead, Alan.
I'm curious, what experience have you had with affordable housing programs? You know, not not workforce or all those other things, but really truly affordable housing?
Yeah, so affordable housing, I we've worked under Prop one, two, three to do master planning in Werfino County. For affordable housing, and I know that's pretty complicated and and especially. Now that deadlines are coming up, and and I know it's been very hard for a lot of municipalities to actually meet those deadlines, they were. Very ambitious in the beginning, and then all of a sudden they're coming up and people haven't met the 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 goals for Prop one, two, three. So I've done affordable housing there, working as as in the planning side with within the planning side. And my focus hasn't been, it's been mostly through the master planning. Like building out, I I believe that area, the LaFawn is the the D U is like fifteen D U's per acre, is that is that correct within the? And that's the issue that you were talking about.
Twenty D U's.
Twenty, okay, within the.
Or twenty five, if twenty five percent is affordable.
Okay, so you've got an increase there within the U R A, so I I was reading the planning. The Plan Manitou, and it was that that area was fifteen, so I was wondering about that, so, okay, so you can get an increase with that. So I've worked with with those elements, trying to work towards workforce housing within the planning side. Less so in the architecture side, in the early part of my career, I did a lot of work. Within the architectural side, when I worked for Van Meter Williams Pollock, because a big. Portion of what they did was affordable housing versus attainable housing, so, yeah. And that's changed a lot, economies have changed, cost of construction has changed. But there's there's some really good models out there too for doing some of those types of things too, and on the eastern plains. There's some interesting models that they've used as well. Yeah, you're welcome.
I have a couple of questions. What kind of staff do you have, and do you see your staff working on? As part of this, or is are we just talking to you?
So I had, actually, Avery, whose family runs Savelli's, was one of my interns for a little while. And I I've had a number of interns over the years, and I've had staff, I don't have current staff, staff right now, what I do is I've got consultants working with me. And that seems like it's been a much easier way to work over the long haul, just because. Running. Building a house, running a business, doing the large projects I'm doing have, it's been a lot easier to manage. People who are already skilled and experts in those areas and work with expectations than than having staff, I I suspect at some point in the future. Once we're into our house and. I'll 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 grow my business, I have plans to to grow into more of a staff, but right now you're basically talking to me, if I need somebody to lean on. For experts in grant writing or for experts in policy, that's who I lean on. So, yeah, it's me.
I I assume in talking to Jim, you have a pretty good understanding of the job.
Yeah, and to me, the most, I mean, I I wouldn't be interested in it if it were full time at all. I love the projects that I do, and I love the impact that I have, but I also really, really want, I'm really invested in being part of Manitou. I I I feel like this community in this area, Colorado Springs, and as well as Manitou, the whole. Greater El Paso County has has changed a lot, and a lot of that has to do with 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 organizing communities and connecting people. And that is a really important piece for me, the the second piece is making space for the next generation. Manitou, I know the school systems, the numbers have been going down and whatnot, and. And having places where parents can safely raise their children and and have more more intergenerational connections, it. Enriches our communities, it makes people's lives better. And having people walking on the streets because they choose to instead of they have to. Because they're pleasant environments, and the other piece too for me is one of my focuses on design is is really in Colorado. We have this incredible wealth that everybody else seems to see, which is our water. And we turn our backs on our watersheds, especially in Colorado Springs. And I I think making those really wonderful, safe places that everybody uses is is important, and this U R A is right in the heart of. An amazing watershed with, you know, an incredible park that's sort of disconnected from. From from that main area that people just don't even know about unless they they, you know. Live here.
One other question, one of our challenges has been to get. Property owners within the U R A. To do something with their property.
And that goes to underutilized buildings, vacant land, or I'll call it dated, either businesses or buildings. How would you propose that we address that issue?
Yeah, I spoke with Jim at length about that. And I can see how dragging your face on the pavement, trying to get somebody to change their mind can be a little bit exhausting over time. But I think that, I think that there's some real, I, I don't know. I think just, I'm, I'm really looking forward to meeting people in person and talking to them. I don't know that I have more sway than Jim does. But I'm willing to, to meet people sort of where they are and listen to what they need and, and what their visions are, you know, for, like, for instance, we were talking about the property where the, the car, the car museum is and, and how he wants to pass it on to his children. And it's not really a car museum, you know? And there's that weird sort of fenced off park area in the very front that could be something wonderful. And then the LaFawn, of course, like finally there's an open space there. There's, there's a number of those, those, those pieces. So for me, I guess, just meeting with people again and doing another round of, of one-on-one meetings. I worked with the city of Winter Park. We did a number of mini-grants, kind of similar to what, what you guys are doing. They, they, the highway goes through the middle of Winter Park. And we basically met with a number of, of owners, property owners, and did sort of visioning pieces with them to see what they wanted and what their properties could be. And we changed a Pizza Hut into a barbecue restaurant. We updated a Jamaican restaurant with very little money into like something that worked a little better. We worked with a Greek and Italian restaurant. We worked with a sort of subway shop skateboard, snowboard area that, and developed their outdoor patio. And, and then did like a bus, a bus shelter in sort of an artful way through those series of mini-grants. And it was, it was such rewarding work just to meet with people and, and, and kind of listen to what their vision is or where they're sitting on their property for and try to help them see what it could be. And I, I know Jim's done that. But I know sometimes when you're talking to people, it can be like beating your head against the wall if they're not willing to do anything. But I think this is sort of a time in Manitou's history where it's ripe for some, and it's necessary. It needs some of that new energy in to not just be a tourist pass-through place or a place where, where there's young families and where there's places for people to, to have kind of a multi-generational community. So I don't know that I have like some magic wand for convincing people to do what, something. But I certainly am willing to meet with them and talk to them.
Right. Well, thank you. Does everybody feel, I, I feel like a lot of my questions were already answered through. I had questions about your vision for the URA because you said you drive through it every day and you see the potential. And, but you talked about the water, which I think is so critical. I agree with you. I'm from the east coast and we embrace our waterways back there. Everything is oriented to the water. And here we do, we put our backs to it. I don't understand that. But, but hearing a lot of what you said kind of satisfied some of my questions about your vision, unless you want to expand on it a little bit.
Yeah, I could see, I mean, this, that whole corridor, like I drive under the bridge by Loafenjug all the time. And I think that bridge and that whole area feels very pedestrian, unsafe. It's like a, it's a barrier to, to the, to, to, to the rest of Manitou. And so I'd love to see, working with Concrete Couch or something, to transform that bridge into a gateway to the rest of Manitou as well. And, and all those other areas too. There's so many possibilities to connect the parks through and create pedestrian areas. And just continuing those, the lights all the way up through, 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 through the whole URA. I'd love to see collaboration with the city council too, like that more connected collaboration. And then there's properties too along there. I know where the, the Jade, Jade, the restaurant that's there, the Jade Dynasty. That could be amazing with, with just like an outdoor patio, places to park, some connections. And the property that came down beside it, that's a little further up, right on the corner there. I don't know what the name of the, right across from, from the traffic circle that, where you can actually see the park for the first time because those buildings are down. That'd be an amazing, another amazing space for more housing or, or something that connects to the community. And just having sort of a more integrated connection into the other side where the ballfields are and the parks. And creating that, that zone around that traffic circle and just making it more of, less of a barrier and more of a connected space through. But then also along the whole URA, in Manitou Avenue, the streetscape, the way that it is, it's such a narrow little chunk between the sidewalk where the light poles are. It, it still needs some kind of greenery or some kind of like trees or something to just break down that scale. And I, you know, there, there's things like that that just would make it a little bit more pedestrian friendly and a little bit more connected to the rest of what this, that area can become. But also I think really not turning your back on these areas where, and, and helping create some affordable housing so that the people who are living in the creeks have places to go and you're dealing with. And maybe not just them, but everybody. Like there's a whole range of people who can't afford housing right now. So. I, I think that it really is the one space in Manitou that has a tremendous opportunity to be transformed into something. And I know that working with difficult property owners is difficult. But I think that a lot of those people are sort of aging too. It's time to pass them on to their children. It's time to move into what the next generation of Manitou is. And, and the needs and services that Manitou and people in Manitou need too. So. That to me is why it's really interesting.
Barb?
Elektra, you've touched on property owners. And in your experience in these various communities, certainly in some of these cases, property owners are not residents.
Exactly.
And they're out of area, out of state, out of region, maybe out of country in some instances. Do you have some particular tactics on how you reach some of these sectors to move things along?
Oh, I don't know, even just, I mean, communicating first through letter, obviously that doesn't always work. Calling, I don't know, short of stalking, I'm not sure how you get ahold of them and looking into the next generation of who, who might be associated. But really Jim had some insights as far as some of those property owners. But I think it's really, I think that's become a real problem. In Colorado especially, there's something like 160 properties in Rocky Ford that are just sitting vacant. And there's no, the next generation doesn't have, you know, they don't, they, there's, people are just sitting on things and prospecting because it's Colorado. So I don't have any magic bullets for talking to them. But I certainly have no fear of reaching out in every possible way to find them and to connect with them. And hopefully to, to, to see how they need to be a part of the community as well. Because sitting on property is, can be a real detriment to a community if it's just sitting there vacant.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Leslie Lewis is an excellent resource for tracking down property owners.
What is?
Leslie Lewis.
Oh, fantastic.
She knows everybody. She always has a way to find people. All right, any other questions? Nancy? Okay. Well, very good. Alan, do you have any, any comments or questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Okay, well, I believe, let's see. So.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
I think we're going to, if, do you want to stay? How do, how do we do this next part? Because we have to go into executive session to discuss. Do you want to bring Elektra back in after, when we reopen the regular meeting? Or contact?
I'm happy with whatever you need. I can go feed the fire over at my house because my plants need to stay warm.
Okay, very good.
I'm fine with that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. We really appreciate your time and I'll be in touch.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate all of you and, and all that you do. Really nice to meet you, finally, another person in planning.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I gotta change my shoes though.
Okay. So I believe at this time we need a motion to close the regular. Oh, I'm sorry. All right. I'm so sorry.
I don't have a lot to report. One thing is tonight's meeting, we're going to be looking at the Dillon motel design. So if any of you are interested in that, tonight would be a good time to come and see what happens. It could go very quickly. It could go on at length and be a total redesign. I have no idea what's going to occur. One of the big things is, is that it'll initially be an interim parking lot. And then while it's an interim, then working on the design for the final parking and extravaganza. So that should be interesting. Secondly, one of the things that was in our packet, I don't know if any of you have seen the packet, but it talked about, we delayed doing the design for the bridge. There was, there was interest in doing a, a bridge across the creek there. So I know that you guys talked previously about having a bridge a little bit further down. Would you be interested in doing the bridge at the Dillon parking lot instead of your original location? And I'm asking so that I can, you can, if you want me to let council know one way or the other tonight when we're discussing it. I don't mean to shock you and-
Yeah. I think the difficulty is, we were looking at doing a bridge when we were still getting sales tax increment monies. And I'm not sure that we have funds absent council deciding to transfer some sales tax to us to do a bridge. I think is the dilemma at the moment.
Okay, good to know. So the council, if you had the tax money, potentially would do it. But since we've got the tax money, it's on us.
It's on you.
Got it. Good answer.
You bring up an interesting topic. And that is that council has not discussed the Dillon property with us at all nor have the consultants or anyone else. And the only information that I think, unless I've missed something that we've gotten, is at our initiative. And I'm a little bit surprised at that because we have, I think collectively have information about the URA and this property that would be beneficial. You know, I've, I've met with planning staff. I've met with the city administrator. I've met with Juan Alvarez, who apparently is no longer involved in this or, or if he is peripherally, well- He's no longer the contact person, so I don't have that. Maybe it's, I haven't followed up on that. But nobody's ever turned around and contacted me, even though I've shown interest. So it, it surprises me that council would even ask this question.
Council's not asking, I was asking personally.
Thank you.
And there was a community engagement meeting. I don't know if you were-
I was out of town.
Yeah.
I, I was able to access the survey, which I answered.
Okay.
So. I've kept in touch when I can, but seems not to be reciprocal.
Okay, thanks. Secondly, the past, since the last URA meeting, we've had like three council meetings. And it's been a lot of just end of year administration, budget, fee schedules, evaluation reports, et cetera, et cetera. The only crap. One thing we did finish up was the Hiawatha, or the Higginbotham Flats master plan. We approved that at our last meeting, which is a rather extravagant plan. So if you've not seen that, might be of interest to go online and take a look at that.
Excuse me Nancy, is there, I'm sorry, is there funding for that?
No, well, there's funding to do the construction. Well, it'll come back to council in a month or something to approve the construction drawings. And the funding will be about $80,000 out of the Parab Conservation Trust fund if, if council approves the contract. So, for that. But then I think council, council was somewhat mixed on how quickly Parab wanted to get the plan, the master plan approved and approval to do the construction drawings so that then they can go out and get grant, try to get grant money. We'll see how that works. And that's, oh, yeah, then we finalized the magic mushroom resolution. That was the, the big thing. So that's pretty much all I've got, unless anyone has any questions for me.
I have a couple of question, or a question. The, all of the Parab signs that the URA paid to have installed were tagged on the back. Have the tags, in one meeting Denise said that they were not going to be removing any of the tags until they'd done a full investigation. And I was curious if that had happened because every sign on Fields Park is tagged, which they did not tag the artwork, which was, they tagged the backside. It was almost like, like they were being thoughtful of the artwork. It was, but I am curious because we would like to get them cleaned up.
I, I will ask that question tonight. I do not know the answer to that.
Okay.
That's fairly recent then, because they weren't tagged when I walked it, which maybe pre-Christmas.
Yeah, it was whenever everybody got hit.
Huge issue with tagging in the city of the past month.
Adams got hit too.
Huge problem, yeah.
And I think it's the same tagger. They went, they started at the top of Ruxton and went all the way down through town and through Fields. So, and I, I, it's true, I have not been down there since before Christmas myself. So maybe they did get it cleaned up, but I thought Audrey told me yesterday they did not.
I don't know.
Okay.
I'll find out.
So I just want to follow up on that. I think that's all.
Thanks.
All right, any questions on the screen for Nancy? Very good. All right, thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, and now we will close the regular meeting. Is there a motion? Oh, do I have to read it in session? Okay, thank you. And then we need to get Elena, she has to come do the switch. Is that what we do? After, okay, right, because she has to, okay, thank you. Okay, so is there a motion? I thought we read this going into session. That's what I thought. Read it into the regular session. All right, let's see. Is there a motion to enter executive session to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations? Develop a strategy for negotiations and instruct negotiators regarding a personal services contract pursuant to CRS 24-6-402. Is that sub 4CI? Is that a one? Sorry. 4C1.
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. All right.
Right. Yeah. Because we'll, we'll want Jim and-
So they have to log off and log back in, isn't that correct?
Right.
Log off now and then log back in to the session that's at the top of the agenda, isn't it? Or is that a different one? I saw it somewhere in an email.
Yeah, I don't think there's a different one.
I thought there was too. Jim is, oh, Jim's already gone.
Jim's gone.
Back into the Zoom.